Okay. All right, good evening. I'd like to call our meeting to order. This is our regularly scheduled City Council meeting for Tuesday, November 15th. And if you would please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation of no doubt, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Dave Frank.
Present.
Barbara Bynum.
Present.
Doug Glasbell.
Present.
Jay David Reed.
Present.
Ed Yulaberry.
Here.
Sienna Beller. All City Councilors and our Youth Council representative are present.
Thank you. Are there any changes, additions, or deletions to the agenda?
Not that I know of. Is that still my role on Zoom?
Yeah, maybe not. Maybe we'll just hand that around. All right, well, we have a couple of proclamations today. And so the first one, I would like to, I'm going to go ahead and stand up here, and if you would, have Mr. Langdon come up and join me. So this proclamation is for National Alzheimer's Disease Awareness Month and National Caregiver Month. Whereas Alzheimer's disease is the seventh leading cause of death affecting more than 76,000 Coloradans among 6.5 million Americans and more than 50 million people around the world. And whereas Alzheimer's disease is a progressive neurodegenerative brain disorder that tragically robs individuals of their memories and leads to progressive mental and physical impairments for which there is currently no prevention or cure. And whereas this disease preys heavily on specific segments of our community, with Black Americans twice as likely as whites to develop the disease, Hispanics 50% more likely than whites, and women account for 2/3 of all people living with Alzheimer's. And whereas, lack of awareness of Alzheimer's disease has resulted in only half of those affected ever being diagnosed, effectively denying countless people access to the Alzheimer's Association free resources. And whereas, the impact of Alzheimer's extends to loved ones of those with the disease, including 159,000 Colorado family members and friends who provided an estimated 184 million hours of unpaid care in 2021 at a value of over $3.7 billion. And whereas, the cost to our country in total payments for health care, long-term care, and hospice for people with Alzheimer's disease in 2021 was $321 billion. And whereas, the City of Montrose recognizes the efforts of Alzheimer's Association to raise funds and promote awareness to fight Alzheimer's disease and related disorders, thereby improving the quality of human life for those living with the disease and their care partners and bringing us closer to finding a cure. Now therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Montrose, Colorado, do hereby proclaim November 2022 as National Alzheimer's Disease Awareness Month and National Caregivers Month. And witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause to be affixed the official seal of the City of Montrose this 15th day of November 2022.
Oh, thank you. I didn't expect that. We really appreciate the support of council and the entire community. Montrose Regional Health particularly and Region 10 are very active in supporting the programs that we have for caregivers. Our Caregiver Support Foundation has currently six support groups for caregivers of families suffering from neurological diseases, including Alzheimer's. But we very much appreciate being here today. Thank you.
Sir, I'd like to personally thank you for your contributions to the community. I had an aunt that suffered from Alzheimer's, and just to see her just waste away was really sad because she was one of my favorite aunts. And I'd like to thank you for your service to the community.
Thank you very much. I'd like to add to your comment that the greatest burden we carry with this disease is that those of us that are caring for them are seeing them go away, lose their personhood throughout the remainder of their life. And we grieve for that. We grieve for that for years as they decline. So I appreciate that, and I very much appreciate your comments, and I'm sorry for the loss of your aunt.
Oh, it's been a while, but thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Our second proclamation is an annual tradition. It is Small Business Saturday. Whereas the City of Montrose celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. And whereas, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 32.5 million small businesses in the United States. Small businesses represent 99.7% of firms with paid employees. Small businesses are responsible for 62% of net new jobs created since 1995. And small businesses employ 46.8% of the employees in the private sector of the United States. And whereas, 79% of consumers understand the importance of supporting the small businesses in their community on Small Business Saturday, 70% report the day makes them want to encourage others to shop small, independently owned retailers, and 66% report that the day makes them want to shop small all year long. And whereas, 58% of shoppers reported they shopped online with a small business, and 54% reported they dined or ordered takeout from a small restaurant, bar, or café on Small Business Saturday in 2021. And whereas, the City of Montrose supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. And whereas, advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Montrose, Colorado, do hereby proclaim November 26, 2022, as Small Business Saturday in the City of Montrose, and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. And witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause to be affixed the official seal of the City of Montrose this 15th day of November 2022. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is the Call for Public Comment on Non-Agenda Items. Call for Public Comment. Agenda item is a time when concerned members of the community may publicly voice their, I'm sorry, last name, their concerns and discuss items of interest. Please note that no formal action will be taken on the matters raised during this time. Are there any members of the public that would wish to address council on a non-agenda item? And seeing none, we can skip ahead. Item number eight is the Approval of Minutes. City Council Consideration of the Minutes of the October 31, 2022 Special City Council Meeting, the November 1, 2022 Regular City Council Meeting. I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the October 31, 2022 Special City Council Meeting and the November 1, 2022 Regular City Council Meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Dave Frank.
Yes.
Barbara Bynum.
Yes.
Doug Glasbell.
Yes.
Jay David Reed.
Yes.
Ed Yulaberry.
Yes.
We have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. Moving on to item number nine, the 2023 Budget Approval. The amended ordinance 2599 on second reading. City Council Consideration of amended ordinance 2599 on second reading, an ordinance of the City of Montrose, Colorado, providing and appropriating funds for defraying the expenses on liabilities of the City of Montrose, Colorado during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2023. Finance Director, Shani Wittenberg.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. This ordinance 2599 comes to you on second reading tonight. It is amended, but it's only amended in, I had hidden rows in my spreadsheet. So the two highlighted, Fund 222 for the Opportunity Business Loans of $60,000 and 440 Improvement Districts, that's basically fees that we pay to the county for collecting the Riverwood Improvement District, were hidden when I copied this spreadsheet originally from Excel to Word. So the total is correct, $94,806,782. That's the same number we've been talking about since late August, first part of September. So that would be the only reason that it's amended is that clerical error that I made. So with that, I don't have a presentation for you this evening unless you'd like me to go through what we've been through. And I would entertain any questions that may have come up between first and second reading.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Go ahead. Mayor Protem Bynum, are there any questions from you? Hearing none. I would entertain a motion. Oh, wait, no, hold on, wait. We have a resolution also in here, and I'm not sure.
Two separate motions.
Two separate motions. So we also have Resolution 2022-16, City Council Consideration of Resolution 22, 2022-16, Adopting the 2023 Municipal Budget. And we've already pretty well covered that.
Correct.
In great detail. Excellent, thank you. So I would accept public comment. And seeing none, I would accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, first motion would be, I move to adopt ordinance 2599 on second reading as presented.
And for clarification, that is the amended ordinance?
Amended ordinance, 2599.
I'll second that.
Thank you. There is a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Dave Frank.
Yes.
Barbara Bynum.
Yes.
Doug Glasbell.
Yes.
Jay David Reed.
Yes.
Ed Yulaberry.
Yes.
We have a unanimous vote.
Thank you, and I would entertain a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-16 as presented.
And I will move to adopt Resolution 2022-16 as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Dave Frank.
Yes.
Barbara Bynum.
Yes.
Doug Glasbell.
Yes.
Jay David Reed.
Yes.
Ed Yulaberry.
Yes.
We have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. Moving on to Ordinance 2600, second reading. City Council Consideration of Ordinance 2600 on second reading, an ordinance of the City of Montrose, Colorado, amending the zoning designation of the Eagle Ranch PD Filing 1, Amendment 3, Outlot 1, from R2 Low Density District to R3A Medium High Density. And this is Planner 2, William Reese.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, any members of the public watching. I have a brief presentation to share. As you probably recall, this rezoned ordinance did come to you for first reading two weeks ago where it was approved. The ordinance has remained unchanged since then, but for the interest of any members of the public watching right now or later on, I'll be happy to give an abridged version of the presentation. So the property in question is located on the northeast corner of Oak Grove Road and 6700 Road. The property is currently split zoned, meaning that part of it is already zoned R3A Medium High Density District, while part of it is R2 Low Density District. This is generally bad practice, and this ordinance would rezone the R2 portion as well as adjacent rights of way in order to match the R3A portion. This area to be rezoned is approximately 8.42 acres. Here is a more exact map of what's being rezoned. The area in pink is the specific area that would be rezoned with this ordinance. Amendments to the city's zoning map shall be allowed if (a) the amendment is not adverse to the public health, safety, and welfare, and (b) the amendment is in substantial conformity with the master plan, or the existing zoning is erroneous, or conditions in the area affected or adjacent areas have changed materially since the area was last zoned. R3A is intended to provide an area suitable for single-family homes, duplexes, and multifamily residences with intermediate density. When looking at rezone applications, we do look to the Comprehensive Plan for Guidance. However, as you know, the Comprehensive Plan is a guiding document and not a legally binding document. According to our Land Use Chapter, this area is listed as residential mixed density low, appropriate for single-family homes, duplexes, and small groups of townhomes. Goal 5 of our Land Use Chapter states that we should promote higher density infill and redevelopment of underutilized sites. We also have housing goals that encourage a variety in type, tenure, and density in order to meet the needs of the community, as well as promote a mix of price, housing price ranges. Staff finds that the proposal meets the rezoned criteria of Section 4429A. It's in compliance with the Comprehensive Plan, including the housing and development goals and objectives. It's compatible with existing uses in the area and would fix the split zoning on the lot. Staff recommends approval of the rezoned ordinance. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Did we receive any mail or anything, any comments from the public on this?
We did not.
All right, I will accept public comment. Any member of the public wish to address council on this issue? And seeing none, would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 2600 on second reading as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Dave Frank.
Yes.
Barbara Bynum.
Yes.
Doug Glasbell.
Yes.
Jay David Reed.
Yes.
Ed Yulaberry.
Yes.
We have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. And our next item, I'm going to step out on this one because I do live next to this area. Thank you, if you want to explain that.
I'm going to recuse myself from this next item because I do have no interest in it, but I do live next to it.
Thank you. We'll give Mr. Glasbell a moment. So this next item is Ordinance 2601 on first reading. City Council Consideration of Ordinance 2601 on first reading, an ordinance of the City of Montrose, Colorado, amending the zoning district designation of 820-6650 Road from R2 Low Density District to R5 Low Density Manufactured Housing. And this is Planning Manager, Jase Hopwall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Council members. This is kind of exciting for me. This is my first formal presentation in front of you, so looking forward to it. So the item I have before you tonight is a rezon of the property located at 820-6650 Road. The rezon would be from R2 to R5, as you indicated. The applicant for this request is also the property owner, Ruby Vargas. Planning Commission did hear this item at their October 26th meeting and voted unanimously to recommend approval to City Council. As shown on the slide here, the subject property is that property that's outlined in red. The subject property totals 1.1 acres in size and currently sits vacant. It is, it's currently zoned R2, which refers to low-density districts, and the applicant is seeking a rezon to R5, which refers to low-density manufactured housing districts. This is really in order to construct a modular home on the site. One thing to note is that the, is that modular housing is not currently allowed in the R2 zone district. So that's really the purpose here. Adjacent zoning to the south is R6. That refers to medium-density manufactured housing, as well as primarily county, county ag and county residential adjacent there that's not annexed into the city limits. Shown on the screen here are the rezoning criteria. William Reese here just mentioned most of them, so I won't go into too much detail. But in short, the rezon should not adversely affect the public health, safety, and welfare of the community, and the request must be consistent with the Comprehensive Plan or those other two items there shown on the screen. The R5 Low Density Manufactured Housing Districts, which is the proposal this evening, is intended to provide a quiet low-density development for single-family residences. Environmental protection is provided by allowing only single-family residences with certain other compatible land uses. Manufactured housing is allowed in this zone district, as I previously mentioned. And the picture here on this slide is of the subject site, and this is just facing eastward. Shown on the right here on the screen is the full view of the Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map. On the left is a zoomed-in view of the subject property itself. As shown, the subject property is listed as residential mixed density low for its future land use designation. This district provides primarily for single-family homes, as well as a small amounts, or small amounts of attached residential dwelling units, such as duplexes or triplexes. Getting into the Comprehensive Plan goals, as it relates to the goals and objectives of our comp plan, I've pinpointed some here on the slide, fairly similar to what you saw in William Reese's previous presentation. So I won't read these verbatim either, but staff does find the request does promote infill and redevelopment of an underutilized site, and it also provides and promotes housing variety that would accommodate manufactured housing that the current R2 zone district Based on the preceding information, as well as the staff report included in the packet this evening, staff has found the proposal meets the rezoned criteria in Section 4-4-29 Subsection A, is in compliance with the Comprehensive Plan, and is compatible with existing uses in the surrounding area. In conclusion, staff, as well as Planning Commission, do recommend approval of the rezon request. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Any questions, Sienna? Very good. In that case, we will hold a hearing since this is a rezoning. And is there any member of the public that would wish to address council on this? And seeing none, I will close the hearing and entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance 2601 on first reading as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Dave Frank.
Yes.
Barbara Bynum.
Yes.
Jay David Reed.
Yes.
Ed Yulaberry.
Yes.
All present voted yes.
Thank you. We're unanimous with one abstention. Item 12, Hilltop North Addition Annexation. And we will hold a hearing on the annexation of the Hilltop North Edition, and this is handled by Planner 2, William Reese.
Thank you again. As you can see from the packet, item 12 includes both Resolution 2022-17 and Ordinance 2602, and then item 13 is for Ordinance 2603. All of these items are associated with the Hilltop North Edition, so I'm going to do one presentation for them, but they do remain as three separate voting items. We have, of course, discussed the Hilltop North Edition previously during City Council Work Session, as well as during the Resolution to set a hearing date. Planning Commission made a recommendation of zoning designation on October 12th. Tonight is the official annexation hearing, including the annexation and zoning ordinances. This property is in northern Montrose, adjacent to 6600 Road, north of the intersection with Locust Road. The property is 10.01 acres in size and is located within the city's urban growth boundary, city sewer service area, and Tri-County Water Service Area. The area is urbanizing, and more than 1/6 of the perimeter is contiguous to city limits. The property is adjacent to cities, to city properties currently zoned R4 High Density District, as well as properties outside of city limits. The applicant is applying for the R4 High Density zoning designation with this annexation. This district is intended to provide for high-density multifamily residential uses, but can also accommodate single-family homes, duplexes, et cetera. As part of the annexation process, we do bring the application in front of the Planning Commission prior to the official City Council annexation hearing. They make a recommendation for a zoning designation to be brought forward to City Council, which should not adversely affect the public health, safety, and welfare. The Planning Commission did make a recommendation to approve the requested R4 zoning with a 4 to 2 vote. This is the annexation plan itself. This shows the legal boundaries of the property in the proposed annexation. This also shows that the property meets the continuity requirements as set forth by the state of Colorado. According to our Comprehensive Plan, this area is listed as residential mixed density medium. This provides for a variety of residential types mixed within a neighborhood, including single-family, duplexes, triplexes, and townhomes. The majority, majority of these designations are in areas that are not yet developed. As we've mentioned previously, some of the goals in our comp plan include the refill and infill and redevelopment of underutilized sites, and encouraging a variety of housing type, tenure, density, and price ranges. The property is within growth area 2. This indicates that the property has proximity to existing infrastructure that would support growth and development. In conclusion, staff finds that the state and local, local regulations have been met to qualify this property for annexation. An annexation agreement has been signed by the applicant, and an annexation impact report has been filed with the county. Staff finds that this proposal is consistent with the public health, safety, and welfare and the Comprehensive Plan. Planning Commission has made a recommendation of approval. Staff recommends approval of the resolution, the annexation, and the zoning ordinances. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. One question I have is just to ensure that this has been checked out to ensure adequate infrastructure support, both on water and sewer.
So Scott can speak somewhat to that, but infrastructure availability is addressed whenever a property goes through the site development application process. I think that's, yeah.
Yeah, generally, the, the annexation zoning level type things, we, looking out for major issues with infrastructure to make them aware if there's any problems. But a lot of those finer details with, with enough money utility extensions and stuff can be made to make them functional. So we don't, that's something we more worry about at the subdivision level. One thing that is unique about this, that we put on the record with them, is this, this is in Tri-County's Water District. They generally, by their bylaws, don't provide fire protection. And so high-density development like this would likely need something special, a special thing to work out with Tri-County to do that, or possibly come out of the city's water, which is part of the reason we're doing a lot of the water resource studies we're doing to see if those kind of things can be accommodated, knowing that those requests may come as these areas develop. So helps tie those together, so.
Excellent, thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, we will get to start with Resolution 2022-17. And we would accept public comment. Seeing none, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-17 as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Dave Frank.
Yes.
Barbara Bynum.
Yes.
Doug Glasbell.
Yes.
Jay David Reed.
Yes.
Ed Yulaberry.
Yes.
We have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. Moving on to Ordinance 2602. City Council Consideration of Ordinance 2602 on first reading, an ordinance of the City of Montrose, Colorado, for the annexation of the Hilltop North Edition. And we will hold a hearing. Opening the hearing. Is there any member of the public that would like to address council on this? And seeing none, I'll close the hearing and entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a motion that we pass Ordinance 2602 on first reading as presented?
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Dave Frank.
Yes.
Barbara Bynum.
Yes.
Doug Glasbell.
Yes.
Jay David Reed.
Yes.
Ed Yulaberry.
Yes.
We have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. Moving on to item 13, Ordinance 2603. City Council Consideration of Ordinance 2603 on first reading, an ordinance of the City of Montrose, Colorado, providing for the zoning of the Hilltop North Edition as an R4 High Density R4 High Density District. And Mr. Reese has already given a great presentation on that. Do you feel you have any other items to add to your presentation?
I have nothing further to add. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Thank you. Then we will open a hearing. Is there any member of the public that would like to address counsel on this item? And seeing none, I'll close the hearing and entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt Ordinance 2603 on first reading as presented.
Second.
Call second.
There's a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Dave Frank?
Yes.
Barbara Bynum?
Yes.
Doug Glasbell?
Yes.
J. David Reed?
Yes.
Ed Yuliberry?
Yes.
We have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. Moving on to item 14, Ordinance 2604 on First Reading. City Council Consideration of Ordinance 2604 on First Reading, an Ordinance of the City of Montrose, Colorado, Designating the Montrose Electric Light and Power Company, 44 South Grand Avenue, Montrose, Colorado, as a City of Montrose historic property pursuant to Statute 4-15 of the Official Code of the City of Montrose. Planner 2, William Reese.
Thank you again. Let me just share my screen here once again. So as you can see from the packet, we do have two designation hearings on tonight's agenda. If you've looked at our GIS maps at all, you may have noticed that the two buildings are both on the same taxable parcel. Or if you've been to the property, you can see that they're connected. However, this connection was not built until 1974. And so for much of the building's histories, they were two separate structures, and they both have their own unique history. For that reason, we are recommending that they be considered separately for designation. I'll first discuss the Montrose Electric Light and Power Company building, as it's a bit older. This is located at the historical address of 44 South Grand Avenue. The building is eligible due to its age, as well as Criteria A and C. The building was erected as a facility of the Montrose Electric Light and Power Company and is associated with the history of utilities in Montrose. The building is also representative of industrial construction of the early 20th century in its brick composition, flat roof, cornice with molded brick, and segmental arch openings with stone lintels with keystones. Prior to the construction of this building, the Montrose Electric Light and Power Company was housed in a building off of South Townsend, which still exists today. Due to expansion, they needed a bigger space, and so the company purchased this piece of property from Robert Hadley, who had originally used the land for produce storage. He sold the land for $5,000 in August of 1904. Based on my research, it does look like there was an existing building on the property at the time, and the power company began adding to the existing building. The plans called for a 60-foot by 142-foot expansion, which would include a 32-foot by 48-foot boiler room on the south side. That can be seen on the right side of this fire insurance map from 1908, with the boilers being indicated by the large black rectangles. Robert Kessler, the president of the company at the time, also announced plans for an ice plant and five cold storage rooms to be located in a two-story addition and would be operational by April of 1905. The newspapers of the time indicated that the property spent about $45,000 on improvements and additions to the building. The new generators were initiated in February of 1905 by Superintendent W.W. Torrance with a capacity for 3,000 lights. Kessler would later sell his interest in the company to the United States Light and Traction Company in January of 1906. In 1914, the Western Colorado Power Company took over as part of a consolidation of smaller electrical systems on the western slope. In later years, the Knuckles Packing Company used the northern portion of the building, beginning in 1923, for meat storage, and by 1931, the remainder of the building was labeled as a reserve plant only. As you can see from this map, from 1912, the northern portion is labeled as a produce and general warehouse. You can also see the three circles over the boilers. These indicate former smoke stacks. More on that in a bit. And then this map is from 1919. The building largely remains unchanged here, but you can now see the ore sampler to the north and see that it is a separate building at this time. Also note the train tracks that run right in front of the buildings. We'll move on to some of the historical pictures of the building. This is the front, or the east facade. I'm not certain of the date of this picture. However, I do know that there are two smoke stacks in this picture. The company added a third boiler, and thus a third smoke stack in 1906, so this must be from sometime between 1904 and 1906. You can see the different color there of the brick indicating where the building was added on to. Also note the bands of molded brick at the cornice and the tall windows with segmental arch lintels with keystones. You can't see it in this picture, but the keystone above the door in the center does read 1904. You can also see the train tracks in front. Note the car full of what looks like coal on the left. And then here we have another picture. Again, I'm unsure of the date, but it is after the third boiler was added. You can see the third smoke stack on the left. If you go by the building, you can obviously see that the smoke stacks are no longer there, and in fact, that whole room has actually been demolished. Where you see the leftmost window that reaches the ground here, this is actually about where the building ends today. Also note that there is no wooden deck at this time. Here is another view from November of 1915. You can see that the wooden deck has been built. Obviously, that's no longer there anymore. It was added on the other side of the railroad for unloading goods. This is a picture from the interior of the building. This picture's from 1913. This is the engine room and switchboard, which would have been the central room of the building. Today, this room is where the coffee shop is. You can see that the door on the wall there, which would have led to the boiler room, that door just leaves outside today. Here is the back of the building. You can see that this picture was taken on October 31st, 1915. As we'll see in a bit, many of these windows on the back have retained their original shape. Looking at the building today, it does retain its cornice, as well as the historic window openings and lintels. The brick composition with the flat roof and cornice with the molded brick is typical of industrial construction at the time. The keystone above the door, as I mentioned, still reads 1904. I know you can't see it on this picture. Here is the north side of the building. As you can see, this is where the boiler room would have been. You can see the remainder of the brick wall to the left there. That is some of the remains of this room before it was demolished. And finally, here is the back of the building. Again, the window openings retain their original structure and shape. However, note that the window in the center there has been bricked over. This is a later modification. And so in conclusion, staff finds that the Electric Light and Power Company meets all eligibility and integrity criteria for designation in Montrose. It is associated with significant events in Montrose history and has distinctive characteristics of industrial construction of the early 20th century. Staff recommends approval for historic designation of this building. If there are any questions, I'm happy to entertain them.
Are there any questions? Ms. Bell? Excellent. I love these little slices of history. It's just kind of cool. Very good. In that case, we will hold a hearing. Is there any member of the public that would like to address us on this issue? And seeing none, I'll close the hearing and entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt Ordinance 2604 on first reading as presented.
Second. Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Dave Frank?
Yes.
Barbara Bynum?
Yes.
Doug Glasbell?
Yes.
J. David Reed?
Yes.
Ed Yuliberry?
Yes.
We have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. And moving on to Ordinance 2605 on first reading. City Council Consideration of Ordinance 2605 on first reading, an Ordinance of the City of Montrose, Colorado, Designating the Montrose Radium Ore Sampler, 112 West Main Street, Montrose, Colorado, as a City of Montrose historic property pursuant to 415 of the Official Code of the City of Montrose. And again, William Reese.
Thank you again. As mentioned, the Montrose Radium Ore Sampler is located at the historic address of 112 West Main Street. We do use the historic addresses for these designations, however, that is not the current address. The building is, of course, over 50 years old. The building was built in 1918. The original site form states that it was built in 1919. I found newspaper articles that state otherwise. It's also associated with the industrial history of Montrose and was reportedly the only commercial radium ore sampler in the world at the time. It reflects Western and Southern Colorado's history as a radium ore market. The building's size, height, and gabled roof design reflect its use as an industrial facility. The radium ore sampler was built by O. Barlow-Wilmarth, who was heavily involved in the mining industry down in Telluride. It looks like it was completed in approximately August of 1918. The sampler received its first car of ore from Gateway in about November. This cart would eventually go on to Europe. A lot of the ore was shipped in from the Paradox Valley in the west end of the county, and later shipped to mills, many of them in Pennsylvania. The sampler received shipments of ore to be assayed in the plant. The plant would pulverize the ore using 20 mesh screens. During World War I, the radium was used for illuminating paint and on airplane parts. The building did also process vanadium and uranium, likely more, but was mostly used for radium. By December of 1920, the sampler had supposedly processed over 1,000 tons of ore. And then, I don't have any proof of this, but it is alleged that some of the radium that came through Montrose was used by Marie Curie, who was, of course, the person who co-discovered radium and was a pioneer in radioactivity and chemistry and physics research. Supposedly, O. Barlow-Wilmarth attempted to convince her to visit Montrose, but it looks like that that never happened. With the end of the war, the price of radium did drop, and the sampler was not quite used as much. By 1941, H.G. and Carl A. Bertis were using the plant as a wholesale meat distribution plant up until the 1960s. By the time the two buildings were connected in 1974, the Hill Petroleum Company had their offices in the building. Looking at the same Sanborn map again from 1919, you can see that this was a two-story wooden frame building with alaterite caulking. The map also indicates the brick basement, and this is the only Sanborn Fire Insurance map that this building appears on. Unfortunately, in contrast to the previous building, I found the historical pictures of this one to be very lacking. This is the only historical picture I could find. This is copied from a newspaper article from June 10th, 1919. You can see that the quality is not very good. If anyone knows where to find some historical pictures of this building, please let me know. This is the building today on the east side. You'll notice that the shed roof projection, which had previously spanned across half of the building, was expanded. That was initially expanded in 1921. Looking at a side view, notice the dormer window on the second floor. This is mirrored on the other side. As mentioned, the connection that you can see on the left is from the '70s. This here is the east side. You can see the brick basement here. Also note the gabled roof mirrored from the east and the brick chimneys. And finally, here is the north side. You can see more of the brick basement, as well as the brick chimneys. Also note the mirrored dormer window on the south side. The windows on each of these facades have been altered. Staff finds that the Montrose Radium Ore Sampler meets the eligibility and integrity criteria for designation in Montrose. It's associated with the area's radium industry and has characteristics of industrial uses in Montrose. Staff recommends approval for historic designation of this building. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? I think it's an interesting little slice of Montrose because we have known it as Sampler Square for decades with absolutely no idea why.
Well, now you know.
A very interesting little peek into our history. All right. In that case, we will hold a hearing. I'll open a hearing. Is there any member of the public that would like to address counsel on this? And seeing none, I'll close the hearing and entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to pass Ordinance 2605 on first reading as presented.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Dave Frank?
Yes.
Barbara Bynum?
Yes.
Doug Glasbell?
Yes.
J. David Reed?
Yes.
Ed Yuliberry?
Yes.
We have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. Moving on to item 16, Staff Reports, Sales Use and Excise Tax Report. Finance Director, Shani Whittemore.
Good evening again. Let me get set up here. Oh, I think you're good. Sorry, still trying to get used to this electronic sharing. All right, so this is the sales use and excise tax report for September of 2022. So we are three-quarters of the way through the year. The general fund collects sales and use tax at 3%. September compared to September of 2021, retail sales taxes at 10.3%. Construction use tax up 123.6%. Use and auto use tax at 4.5%, with total collections up 11.8%. And almost a 30% positive budget variance, meaning we've collected more revenue than we anticipated. Year-to-date, retail sales taxes up 11%, or $1.7 million. Construction use tax up almost 50%, or almost $300,000. Use and auto use tax up 2.5%, or $29,000, with total collections up 11.7%, or $2 million, with another positive budget variance for year-to-date of 30.1%, or $4.5 million more has been collected than we anticipated when we created the 2022 budget. Public Safety Sales and Use Tax. As of January 1st, 2020, we started collecting 0.58% to go towards public safety. In September compared to September of 2021, retail sales taxes up 10.3%. Construction use tax up 123.6%. Use and auto use tax up 4.5%, and total collections up 11.8%. Budget variance positive here of 28.3%. Year-to-date, we have collected for the Public Safety Fund 10.9% of retail sales tax. It's an increase from 2021, or $329,000. Construction use taxes up 26.9%, or $40,000. Use and auto use tax up 2.5%, or $6,000, with total collections up 11.1%, or $375,000. Positive budget variance of 27.1%, or about $801,000 more has been collected than we budgeted. Montrose Recreation District, back in 2014, we started collecting 0.3% to help them build and maintain their new facility south of town. In September, we collected $234,109, or 11.8% more than we did in September of 2021. Year-to-date, we've collected almost $2 million, 11% more through September, or about $200,000. Excise taxes. Hotel excise tax adds 0.9%. Restaurant excise tax adds 0.8% to our total tax rate. And in September compared to September of 2021, hotel excise tax is up 17%. Restaurant excise tax is up 12.9%, with total collections up 14%, or 30.2% more has been collected in September than we collected in 2021. Year-to-date, excise tax, hotel excise tax is up almost 15%, or $17,000. Restaurant excise tax is up 7.6%, or $32,000, with total collections up 9.2%, or just about $50,000. Positive budget variance here of 25.1%, or $118,000 more has been collected than we anticipated. Retail sales enhancement. This is a portion of the vendor's fee that vendors gave up back in 1990. And in September, we collected $56,530, or 11.7% more than we did in September of 2021. Year-to-date, we've collected $455,026, almost 11% more than we did year-to-date 2021, or $45,000. So with that, it was a pretty positive three-quarters of the year. And I'll entertain any questions you may have.
Very good. Any questions?
I have nothing.
Thank you. Moving on to the next item is our third quarter budget review.
Great. I do not have a presentation for this one, but as you can tell in your packet, I've included all of the documents. And with three-quarters of the year completed, our revenues are coming in as anticipated, and our expenditures are, for the most part, less than that 75%. and our expenditures are, for the most part, less than that 75%. So we anticipate the year ending in a favorable manner. There's no issues or red flags that we need to bring you aware of.
Thank you. Any other questions? Ms. Allen?
So there's not much for comments on U-Council. A couple of the projects that we're working on, I think we're planning to do the Rock, the Rec again, like we did last year, and an upcoming small project to go to the nursing homes and help with anything they need, like playing board games or anything with them just for a small project. And I attended with a couple other members of U-Council the Image Summit in Brighton last week or week before. I can't remember, but that just focused on some leadership skills and just innovative thinking with that to help with collaboration with the youth and just problem solving. So a lot of speakers were at that, and we, so we attended that for the two days. But with that, there's not much else, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
How are you enjoying your time on council, U-Council so far?
It's good. This is my first year on it, and it's a lot different than what I was expecting, but it's super fun, super nice to work with Bruseta, so.
Are you learning all sorts of new skills?
I am, yeah. It's really nice. I'm the secretary, so taking notes on the agenda is fun to do on that. But yeah, I like it.
Very good. Any other questions or comments from council?
I find it exciting.
Great. All right, moving on to city council comments. Anybody have any comments? And we do have one comment from Chief Hall. Go ahead, if you want to come on up.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Thanks for calling me up here, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Just real quick, I wanted to, I just found out here just a little bit ago, but education and higher education has always been very important to the city of Montrose. And so tonight, I would like to congratulate Commander Matt Smith for obtaining his master's degree, or master's of science degree in industrial organizational psychology. So I just wanted to congratulate him in front of all of you and just say thanks for all of your hard work.
No speech from me. So now I'm going to start calling you Master Smith.
Masters.
Yeah, you notice he didn't say that's a bad idea.
He did.
Yeah, I'd say it.
Congratulations. That's a hallmark that I think is very noteworthy, and it really reflects well on the structure in PD as well as your own dedication to achieving that, because we know getting a master's is an uphill battle. So congratulations on behalf of the city of Montrose. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Good job.
Are there any other staff comments? We kind of jumped a little bit, but nobody seemed to be running toward the podium, so. All right, very good.
I'd make a motion to adjourn.
There we go. We have a motion adjourned. We are adjourned.